We'll start this evening with our elementary principal, Ms. Thea Jackson By...
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I am super excited to introduce to some and present to others our Bradley Elementary School Student of the Month, none other than Mr. Joseph Dickerson. Please come on up, Mom, and come on up, Grandma. That's right, come on up. Just to let you know a little bit, also, we have Joseph's teacher here. She wants to say a couple of words really quick about Joseph. During our read-throughs, Dr. Adams' test, we have looked at Joseph's writing samples, and Dr. Adams has looked at him, he's like, "This is an example." He was so excited when he saw all the books of work. And his handwriting is awesome, and we are so proud of him, and we have his teacher, Ms. Rass.
I want to commend this young man right here, who can start deserving of this award. He is an outstanding student, not only on paper, but he is also an outstanding young man. He is always respectful, he always makes sure that he gets his work done correctly, and when he has any problems with anything, he is wise enough to raise his hand and make sure that he gets an understanding before we move on with anything. So I'm super proud of Joseph Dickerson, and congratulations, we deserve this.
So Joseph, we have a couple things for you, we have some rams to wear, of course. And, of course, Ashley, as his mom, we have some rams to wear for you. And Ashley, it would not be possible to have Joseph without you, so we want to give you your flowers. And without Ashley, we have to give Joanne her flowers for giving you, for giving us Ashley, who gave us Joseph. And just to let you know, Joseph's mom, and his sister, and his whole family is there, they're gonna share a moment. Thank you, Joseph, and congratulations. Our Bradley Elementary. Next, we have our Bradley Elementary School Staff Member of the Month, none other than Mrs. Lyra Comporti. When I'm telling you she has been the wind beneath our wings, when her co-teacher was out or wasn't happy to hear, she pulled it down, she held it down, and we are so proud of her, and her faculty and the staff say thank you for everything that you do, and we appreciate everything you did to help everything together. So congratulations, and then please. And before we start to honor you, part in the principal's classes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson Byers. We're gonna bring up the high school president, Ms. O'Neal.
So I'm gonna start by presenting our Students of the Month. Our Students of the Month are not here tonight, but I still wanted to recognize both. First, we are recognizing a 12th grader, Tyanna Kelly. Tyanna is in our Pathways to Graduation Program. She's in an accelerated program to try to get her to her goal of graduation at the end of June. She is doing fantastic work in there, she's taking seven classes to graduate, which is more than typical. She's ahead of schedule on all of them, she's passing them all with straight A's, and she's had perfect attendance, and she started the program. So someone really has shown resilience, so we're recognizing her this evening. And then for seventh and eighth grade, we are recognizing eighth grader, Kaka Gross. He is in our Dream Academy Program. Kaka has maybe the most positive attitude we'll ever see, he makes me smile and laugh even when things are not funny. He is getting straight A's as well, and he has near-perfect attendance, and he's just been a really great breath of fresh air. He will advocate for the eighth graders, he will come and talk to me, and air out his preferences. He's just a really all-around good kid, and he's doing a great job. My Staff Member of the Month is Ms. Becky Band. Ms. Band is also just a really positive attitude in general. She is always smiling, she's someone who always volunteers first to help out. This year, she brought Holocaust and genocide since last two hours school, and she actually has helped facilitate a partnership with Stockton University that will start next year, which is another dual enrollment opportunity for our students. So really exciting for us, that will be in addition to Dream Academy, and sort of even more students with college writing in. So she brought that to us, and really pushed needs and considerate, and got all the information, and we're really, really excited about it. So congratulations.
Congratulations. We'll bring up Mr. Perry Medina from the MLK Elementary.
Thank you very much, and my name is Perry Medina, Principal at Dr. Margaret McCain of our elementary, if you don't mind, I'm just taking. My Student of the Month is none other than sixth grader Emily Salamont Torres, Alexa and I, her and her family. So if you notice, we see she has a blazer off, and Insignia is Council of Students. Emily was recently voted by her peers to be a member of the student council. And that comes with great responsibility, however, we know that she's up to the task. Not only that, she's a straight A student, she is a wonderful, wonderful human being, and we are so proud of what she has been able to accomplish. And she is a very great example of the town, as very part has, and the town that we can cultivate. Emily, I'm proud of you, mom, dad, and you so much, and your sister. All right. All right, and our Staff Member of the Month, Ms. Adonia Snyder, who actually got Teacher of the Year last year for our class. Bring with you family, too. So Ms. Snyder, as I mentioned, got Teacher of the Year in last year at MLK. She has been such a great help, great support, committed to her peers, committed to the school, committed to our students and parents. And we are extremely fortunate that we have a part of the team, because she is able to complement all others to get the job. So thank you so much, Ms. Snyder.
Thank you. As we wrap up, last, we have these, Dr. Short.
Good evening, everyone. It is with delight and great, great, great pride as a principal of Thirdgood Marshall Elementary School that I call up a young lady who is a third grade student, who is not only a member of our safety patrol, and volunteers in every school event and takes initiative, she is someone who is making gains academically, has stellar attendance, and has been pulled in by her peers and teachers alike of being kind, nurturing, and supportive to all students pre-grad their third grade at Thirdgood Marshall. And she's also the spirit league champion of our school. So Ms. Daye Young and Mom, please come on up, ladies and gentlemen. And for you, I've actually filled in a lot of your favorite things that we talked about today. Congratulations, sweetheart. And now for our Staff Member of the Month. I am again feeling with pride for this month selected by his selection, by his peers. The Staff of the Month is someone who is in his 23rd year of service for the Asbury Park School District for the Office of Safety and Security. He had perfect attendance last year, and is on his way to getting perfect attendance for this school year. He is truly the first person any visitor at Thirdgood Marshall sees. He knows every family, every student, every staff member, and we hear nothing but positive things about him. Mr. Keith Turman, please come on up. And we got very creative for you. Here are our students, but it's Random Acts of Kindness Month, so your students will random acts of kindness there. Thank you, Lady T. J. for your... So thank you.
You'll open it up once you... Mr. Tucker, if you put in mine, just open it up so they can take it to you. Okay. One of our high school... Eighth grade. All right.
We're gonna have a little repeat because he just came. So our eighth grade student of the month is Mr. Kaka Gross. Come on up. As I said before, Kaka is one of Dream Academy students, known for his super positive attitude, but also his genuine interest in school, his drive to make it better, his, I think, fearlessness in advocating for things to be better, and speaking on behalf of his class. He has befriended me, I think, as one of the first faces when I came to high school, and he gets you laughing when we're having serious conversations. So congratulations, Kaka.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience. We're about to officially open the meeting. In accordance to the Vision of the Open Club Meeting Act, KJS 1046, the Asbury Park Board of Education provides an added notice of this meeting restating the notice of the time, date, and location as of noon, and agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, a new poster of January 27, 2023, being mailed. Conference notice has been placed under Ministry of Health, Ministry of Health and Defense, District Schools, Asbury Park Department is moving in Asbury Park Police Department following the statement of January 27, 2023. Asbury Park School, they should provide all students with comprehensive progressive education, criminal possessing skills, and character to succeed in that either is evolving global society. Roll call, please.
Ms. Rill. Ms. Zinski. Dr. Ben. Ms. Brady. Ms. Grace. Ms. Rogers. Ms. Saunders. Ms. Alzad.
Please rise and glasses.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, and every nation of us.
Good evening, once again. We're going to record the presentation, so I just wanted to update the committee on a couple of things prior to committee reports. As we've been moving in more... Well, we've been consistently transparent in our message regarding the updates of academic programs within the district. Contrary to any misinformation, as I indicated last night, there was zero intentions of dismantling the Ally Health Program. This evening, before the board, there will be a recommendation for the hiring of a staff member, as I indicated last night. That we will be moving forward with that, as well as tutoring services for our students in the Dream Academy Program, eleventh graders through the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, the Monmouth County Chapter, I forget the exact name. However, they also will be providing SAT tutoring to our Dream Eleven students, as well as having additional tutors for our students in the Ally Health Program, which we were able to secure through Rutgers, as well as the physician that is one of the tutors, is the wife of one of the members of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, who actually does volunteering at Thirdgood Marshall, and has been doing that for the greater part of this year. Yeah, she is a physician, Emily. So with that, I wanted to make sure that that was clear before there was any potential misinformation regarding where and how we're moving with our programs. Additionally, I met with the Student Advisory Committee today, which I do monthly, and address some of the concerns regarding lunch for Brackley and Thirdgood moving from nuggets to patties and chicken patties. But also, during that meeting, we were able to have a candid conversation about some information that the Dream Scott was in eighth grade, and were being told that we were dismantling the eighth grade program going into next year. I want to be very clear, as I was to those students, if you do not get the information from my mouth, do not believe what you were being told. Do not believe anything written by a blogger. If you do not hear it from me, and there are students in the audience who were sitting in that meeting this morning, our young man right there in the front row, and the misinformation regarding the Brookdale Dual Enrollment Program, which we have been working with Brookdale and President Stout on Brookdale, had a meeting with him last week, regarding the transition for all dual enrollment programs at Brookdale for every school that has a dual enrollment program in Monmouth County. So let me say that one more time. Every school that has a dual enrollment program in Monmouth County and a partnership with Brookdale will be transitioning from the Associate Degree Program to a 30 college credit program, beginning with next year's ninth graders. Let that sink in for a second. We are not dismantling any of our dual enrollment programs. We are not dismantling the Ally Health Program. We had to move the materials and equipment because we had HVAC work being done in those classrooms. Let that sink in for a second. Because I came today home with smoke. Because the one thing that we're not going to do is continue to hear the misinformation and the deliberate disinformation about what's going on in Asbury Park. We need to directly impact our students. So we will be bringing in cosmetology and eliminating the lawn public safety... Excuse me, the lawn public safety CTE. We have gone to Jersey City to visit Lincoln High School, which has one of the oldest operating cosmetology programs in the state, almost 50 years in existence. Not only did we meet with the superintendent in Jersey City, but also the assistant superintendent over the program, as well as we will be partnering with them in terms of identifying, certificated, certified, licensed instructors for that program. That program, if a student was to take on a cosmetology interest, would cost almost $23,000 on their own after graduation. So the curriculum, we will be partnering with the Jersey City Public Schools, who will be in full support of that program, because they've already written the curriculum for cosmetology, will be working in partnership with them. So I want to make sure that we need to dot the i's and cross the t's on everything that I say before it's reported. As well, I had a meeting last month with our student advisor, I wish she was here, but she was in the student advisor meeting this morning, regarding the Dream Eleven Program and the support. One of the things that came out of that meeting is those high school students that are at Asbury Park will be volunteering on Tuesdays and Thursdays, where they are not taking the SAT prep class, at our elementary school students to do volunteer hours. At not only the high school, which is one of the areas that the students express an interest in doing, and working with the seventh and eighth graders, but also Brackley, the upper elementary, and Thirdgood Marshall. I'll give a pregnant pause for that, so that stays there. At no time are we stipulating or shortening student voices. I have met with the students every month, and continue to meet with them monthly to get their feedback on how we can make this district better. One of the things that was brought up in today's meeting was regarding the uniform and the flexibility at the high school. They will present some feedback for me, which we will discuss at our next month's meeting, and begin to plan a course of action for September. Again, I want to reiterate, the president of any association does not speak on behalf of the district. I am the superintendent, I am the chief academic officer, I speak on behalf of the operations and the execution of those operations for the district. If it doesn't come out of my mouth, if it's not in writing, and excuse my passion, because, you know, I'm just not a docile black woman. Don't confuse my passion with arrogance or anything, but I'm advocating on behalf of the children in this district, first and foremost. So I hope that that is correctly printed, recorded, and disseminated. The children in this district come first. That's my report. Make sure you got my good side and my scarf.
Good evening, everyone. I am going to just vote a few bullet points from the Athletic Committee meeting in February. Kind of coming off of Dr. Adams, I want to say, what I'm prepared to say does not mean someone is being terminated, someone is looking to be terminated. It is something that the district and any other district has to do as mandated when it comes to athletics. It is mandatory that we look to interview prospects, and saying that the district is looking to interview and hire football coaches, baseball coaches, and volleyball coaches. Again, that does not mean anyone has lost anything, it just means it's something that has to be done. It's just part of what, I guess, athletics do. They look to hire every year. So please do not go back and tell someone, "Oh, you're losing your position, you're not going to be coaching next year," or whatever the case may be. That's not what this is about. Secondly, I want to say congratulations to the middle school. They had a really successful season with the girls' basketball team and the wrestling team. Everyone seems to think that, you know, things are looking well, and they had a pretty good winning season, actually. That's pretty much it. Anything else on athletics? No, just, that's it. But please, again, no rumors. Anybody concerned, anybody want to bring up something, feel like, "Oh, athletics that they're hiring," we have a whole personnel department. I'm sure no one is saying that, you know, we're losing anyone. Thank you.
Okay, the Finance Committee, we look over the stabilization we received that's going to go to projects that were originally being worked for Asbury Park, and had to use this year to make up some budget differences. We're over the budget calendar, which is going to be a tight squeeze for all business administrators in the state of New Jersey because of the timelines, they keep changing, and things have to be put in at different times, or the day after, and some really busy seat for business administrators. So we are thinking about, or we should, if we can, a special meeting on March 16th, to, or before then, to put in a tentative budget approval, tentative budget approval for the board, if that date's acceptable. The Elevator Project, Dr. Hartmouth, Thirteenth Middle School is, upper middle school, is going to be hopefully done by the first week in April. We also have, which is what everyone is waiting for. We also have a changeover for the rooftop unit, the kitchen area, the upper elementary, because of the air closed, and that's on the agenda. It's a greater increase in airflow than anticipated. Our CAC report, they're supposed to be presented in April, March or April, and so far, no findings that we know of. We also discussed food service things that have to go out, because the timelines, at that time, we go out every, is it four years, every three, four years, every month? And then we're also looking at the substitute services that we have, to see whether we're ready to go out, if we're good to go, and that's my report.
Oh, I'm sorry, back to athletics, but I forgot to mention, if you know someone who is qualified, those positions aren't on our district website. Okay? So, Dr. Hartmouth, as far as qualifications, they will find that out on the district website.
The qualifications are all postings. Again, just to reiterate and to provide clarity, all coaching positions are yearly positions. Every year, coaches have to reapply, re-interview for all coaching positions.
Every year, coaches have to reapply, re-interview for all coaching physicians. Once you're hired as a coach, that does not mean you're the coach until you retire from coaching. That is by law. So to open up, again, to expand the pool of candidates, that is what Ms. Vice President Alsby is referring to. So trying to expand the experience pool. And as, as a former athlete, I am shopless mind. So best coaches, it's a meritocracy, best players, meritocracy. So that is what that is intended to do. To strengthen our pool of coaches in order to strengthen our pool of programs. So that's what that is intended.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we have a really robust, uh, agenda items here for the CNA committee, but I'm excited about some of the things that we have coming. Uh, first thing, we are working with our Ally Health students to provide them their CPR, uh, life support class. Um, so we have a major idea for that, so that money of the 12th grade senior Ally Health students can, uh, participate. Uh, we're also looking at, uh, working, continuing our work of the field in Jersey for our garden at MLK, uh, Elementary School. We, uh, started this last year. We were able to actually, uh, produce some vegetables for kids to consume as we work to continue that this year. Uh, also partnering, living partner with Boys and Girls Club as part of our efforts to expand, uh, after-school offerings. Uh, and so we contacted them and worked in the past, um, in the past, so we're looking to do a partnership again this year at the cost of sixteen, nineteen thousand four hundred dollars. I'm excited about, uh, the proposal to bring in the, uh, our cosmetology program, CTE, which we are looking to be approved and we're going to start, uh, that process immediately. Once it's approved, most excited, again, uh, for the recommendation to have our students on this board agenda, who are going to be working with our students who are learning official here. And, uh, they are all volunteers, they all are medical, either medical students or are doctors themselves, who are working, like I said, voluntarily with our students at the Ally Health program, which we need to, uh, we're looking to directly orchestrate a program. Uh, we're also, um, the next five or six items all pertaining to our summer program. We broke it up this way because different funding sources and different programs require a different, uh, agenda write-up. Um, so basically, we start with our pre-grad assistant program. This year, we're going to help the summer program at One Building, Third Good Marshall, for several reasons, one, its salvation, two, because there'll be a lot of destruction going on in the district, Third Good Marshall seems poised to host all of our programs. So that's what we're looking to do. Also partnering, just as an aside, we're partnering with the city to make sure that students who do attend this summer program have a full pay, uh, opportunity with the rec program of the city. So having close contact with the speech board or the speech board of the city to make sure that that happens and our students have everything they need to make it. So their parents, so they can have a full pay, uh, summer programming for their children. So basically, that covers all of our summer, it covers our high school as well, our, uh, credit recovery for, for the high school kids as well as our summer, uh, dream classes that I was usually taking in the summer as well. It's all again. And then, um, one of the final items on our agenda is that we're looking to approve the wrestling club. I remember years past, looking at their part in developing initiatives. Uh, and that will take us at the upper elementary school, and the season's going to run from March thirteenth to June, uh, twenty, twenty-three for our fourth to twelfth grade students, community program, uh, part of the districts. And that is one of...
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, building's in progress, so, uh, Ms. Losinski covered, uh, a couple of the items regarding the technical services, Asbury Park's elevator. Um, but, uh, we did get a facility use request. Uh, we received an application, an application for use of the football stadium by A seven and L. If the tackle football league has used the stadium in the past, uh, they're going to pay the associated fees for use for Sundays, uh, March through June. It's like a local XFL league. Um, the committee received an email, uh, from the Asbury Little League regarding, like, one thousand U.S. P. Uh, they asked that the U.S. P. be waived based on several upgrades that they, they like to donate to the district, including a new scoreboard, uh, magic cage betting, picnic tables, and rerating of the infield. Central office relocation and future use of the Obama Building. Uh, the district is moving forward with improvements to the Barack Obama Building to prepare for the new, uh, central office, uh, from Fourth Avenue. District, uh, ordered new routers, which is wired ten points to match the upgrades being done in other buildings throughout the district. Uh, also, uh, other, other items were, um, we had a water pipe burst over the recent cold weekend, weekends ago at MLK. Uh, the water impacted fuel rooms on the second floor, or first floor. Uh, the incident was reported to the district insurance carrier, and remediation activities are underway. I don't know, since we met, are they still underway or, uh, have they finished?
Well, they cleaned out and removed all the green impacted areas. The next step will be, uh, refurbishment of the impacted area.
Uh, and then the committee also discussed refurbishment of the softball field opposite of Marcy's baseball field at the high school. That, what was that? So, uh, anyway, so that's my report. Uh, I did want to piggyback for a moment on what Ms. Alsby said and also what Dr. Adams said, uh, about rumors and misinformation to look where. Uh, I don't know if everyone knows, but New Jersey actually became the first state to mandate K for twelve students learn about information leaders. And my personal opinion is, and I think there's also a lot of adults that should take that information, I suppose. Um, Dr. Adams has been very nicely, not really mentioned the blog. I'm not that, I'm, 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 I will lay it out. This blog that you hear us talking about, okay, is a blog that is funded by the Results in Education Foundation. What is the Results in Education Foundation? It is a nonprofit that supports charter schools with a budget of over six million dollars. The author of, and the person that, I don't even want to say reports, but spews this misinformation and, in her own words, gossip and rumor. Okay, any piece of trash that gets thrown her way. She gets paid, and you can look this up in their nine-nine, you form, one hundred thirty-three thousand dollars a year. That's up from one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars last year. How many people near me a hundred thirty-three thousand dollars a year? One person. What I'm saying is that we need to be really careful about where we go to receive our information from, okay? And know where to connect the dots. If there's a political agenda, and this woman's political agenda, and this organization's very well-funded political agenda is to increase enrollment in the charter schools by badmouthing public schools and public school teachers, not just in Asbury Park, but also all over New Jersey, okay? And it's a tough gig. Trust me, I don't envy Ms. Waters because, shh, New Jersey has the number one public schools in the country. So what do they do? They pick on the weakest, so-called weakest school district, former athletic districts, including Newark, including Camden, and including Asbury Park. So I just want to make people aware where this agenda is coming from. They want to see you put out of business, teachers. They want to see all of these schools locked up and all the kids go to charter schools. That is their mission, it is a very well-funded mission. And, you know what, shame on you. If you're sitting there giving this person rumors and emailing her all kinds of misinformation about the schools, because we work, I know there's teachers here that work their butts off, there's students that work their butts off, there's staff that work their butts off, and there's people over here that work their butts off every day to make sure that we do what best we can for our students. And this lady thinks she should come around and do this. Go ahead, try me, Ms. Waters. Me, Joe Griller, school board member, that's all I am. I got nothing to lose with this thing. So if she wants to go and sit there and badmouth us, go right ahead. I'm going to badmouth her. I'm going to make sure that I find out every little bit about this Results in Education Foundation. But the charter schools aren't going to win. Everybody talks about these little expenditures here and there. Nobody talks about the twelve million dollars that we spend every year that we have to take of taxpayer money and then funnel it to the charter schools. They want to see more of that. They want to see these buildings close-handed. I'm sure as hell not going to make that happen. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Joe, for saying what I want to say.
Sorry, that's the truth.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the Policy Committee met on the sixteenth. Uh, we reviewed the work that was put out in the Strass and Strauss Estimating. That's the group that provides all, most school districts across the state with updates that reflect changes in legislation or law. Uh, there's about fourteen, uh, policies and regulations there for a second reading in the agenda tonight. Uh, the committee also discussed, uh, our policy on student-provided technology devices and, uh, talked about the cost of repairs made to damaged lighting devices and how they might go about, uh, recovering some of the costs associated with broken screens, lost machines, those sorts of things. So they have some ideas, but they're not ready to present anything in this one. That's, that's all for me, thank you.
Good afternoon to everyone. I'd like to thank all the staff that supported me and gave you words of encouragement after our last month's meeting. I'm truly grateful and I realize that it is not anyone's love thing. I hope this did not come off as me being nagging, but I need to see a change before I leave this school district next year, next school year. Since the last meeting, it was announced that another teacher from the Asbury Park High School resigned. This teacher was my coach, instructor, and role model to me, as well as countless students at Asbury Park High School. I mention this because I should speak louder than words, and instead of a member of the highest esteem resigns, you have to question what went wrong. Uh, this teacher was Ms. McMillan. And I'd also like to mention that there are some issues with the students in her class that are not receiving credit and final grade for, because they didn't find a long-term support for her class. Uh, another thing I realized from the addition of supervisors is the lack of interest in building connection with our students. When we're introduced to new faces that will dictate the things that we do, we should feel that we can rely on them with any problems that we have. Instead, it feels a bit disengaging and detached. My other concern, which was talked about in the student advisory meeting with the other schools, is that the Dream Academy program, um, it won't come to an end, but I was informed that students will not receive half the credits of what we receive now. Um, this topic was a bit important because I have a sister that is going to be a incoming freshman next year. And apparently, there was a bit of uproar over this. The students were upset because they were relying on this program for the future. And the way that it was told to them, I think it would, could have been handled better because my mom was also really looking forward to my sister being part of the program that I was going to be finishing with. Decisions like these should be handled with more seriousness since my sister was looking forward to be part of this dual role recovery. And I do understand the rumors, the speculations, that shouldn't happen, but that's what happens when no one knows what's going on. I do see the initiative with the Ally Health program, and I hope to see more improvements. Thank you.
If I may follow up on one item, um, I did, uh, have a communication with Ms. McMillan. If everybody doesn't know, she's seven-eighteen. So she's a very young infant, and she sits at a physician at six minutes from her house in her hometown. So with childcare, the things that, uh, she needs to take care of, it was a good move for her. And she did say that she loves Asbury Park High School, so just wanted to add that.
Okay, so we're going to open up public participation, but before I do, um, please try to keep it at the three minutes because there's a lot of you, and I want to make sure everyone gets heard. At this time, we'll open up public participation. Again, come closer to the mic, we got ready to answer. Just stay here, you're getting one of them.
Hi, my name is Ashdama, I'm from North Carolina.
Your residence is in Asbury.
Yes. I'm a native student in the Asbury Park School District. I would like to inquire about a restart to the law enforcement academy. My first, uh, professional, my professional endeavor is to become an attorney. And I, and a lot of the first classes will allow me to be exposed to all aspects of law enforcement. The exposure will broaden my understanding of law. In my internship course, I discovered the Bill of Rights and I've applied that to, that led me to my basic life. That's why I'm speaking into my previous engagement with my education. I'm eager to restore the law enforcement academy.
Hi, everyone. I was just introduced to you as the new student of the month, but I'm also concerned about my education. Hi, my name is Kakros. I'm also currently a student at Asbury Park School District. I was, I was inspired by the students that came to previous work and to discuss the important academy being eliminated. Of course, I am referring to the Ally Health Academy. I am here today to ask for a law enforcement academy to be reinstated. As a seventh grader, I was introduced to this academy. This introduction truly curious me, causing me to return down and looking to participate in the law enforcement academy. When I got to my freshman year, fortunately, I'm rich in my freshman year, however, the law enforcement academy has been abolished. The law enforcement academy provided an opportunity for students to investigate careers at law enforcement. In addition, this academy helped me gain and earn a better understanding of law enforcement and to have a higher level of respect for the work that law enforcement tells. Furthermore, the law enforcement academy gave me an in-depth knowledge and comprehension of the legislative and judiciary practices of government. As a result of the law enforcement academy being eliminated, students are forced to repeat the same classes they have already done. I know this only may have enlightened us about different opportunities that are coming to the school in the future, but this is what I believe was, and I really have my hopes and dreams towards. In light of what you have just heard, I implore this board to reconsider and reinstate into the curriculum, law enforcement academy.
Hello, my name is Maurya Wilson from Asbury Park High School. I feel like the law of public safety program, and hopefully learn a lot about law. At first, I wanted to be an actor, but once I joined the times, I learned lots and lots and maybe one of the important things in the future. So we don't have the program now, or we don't have our health facility. I'm trying to dig out those stats. But maybe if we were to bring back the law enforcement program, we'd all be able to pursue our dreams within the law enforcement.
Good afternoon, my name is Kiera Lawson, resident of Asbury Park. So I have two things that I would like to address. First thing is involving my daughter who attends upper elementary school. And I wanna thank Mr. Medina because he's been doing a great job communicating with me regarding the issues that I'm having. But it was hard to my attention that my daughter was not receiving some of her services that she's supposed to be receiving because they do not have enough staff in employees. So I would like to know if something to be done about the staffing. Mr. Medina did work out to where he did with someone else on those services that she was missing lately, but the fact that she went so long and it went unnoticed for so long is kind of unacceptable. And secondly, I'm glad to hear that you guys are bringing more CTE programs to Asbury Park. But what my concern is, is the criteria in which you are bringing the CTEs to Asbury Park. When it comes to cosmetology, and I know this information because CTE is what I teach and it's what my passion is. Cosmetology is set to grow 11% in demand by 2031. You have other CTEs that are in demand that's looking to grow about 80% within the next five years, like cybersecurity. Or you have drug flying that is set to grow 51.1% within the next five years. So if we wanna set our students up for a better future, not give them things that, yes, it'll save them about $20,000, depending on what school they go to, for cosmetology afterwards, but what is the job prospect looking like? And there's already so many barbers, hairstylists, opticians out there right now if they don't know the business part of running their own business once they get that license. So job security isn't really there, so why don't we give the CTEs that would grant them job security once they finish high school? Where they are not looking for something else to supplement their income because they took a CTE that had, well, job security. Thank you.
Why you guys always throwing me for a loop? Good evening, my name is Maury Casey and I reside at 1670 West Princeton Avenue in Brick. I was employed by the Asbury Park Board of Education for 34 years and retired in June of 2021 due to needing a hip replacement. I was so excited to see a position being posted with a closing date of 2/14/23 and to see that there's a agenda tonight that just got put on. I had a nice three minute, three second little talk about how I went through the whole process of filling out the application, completely with letters of recognition, got my resume, buffed up, sent in everything, completed and done. I am thrilled, but I was told, and I have my Nino here, because I didn't wanna have to pull up. Her phone conversation interview has been canceled since you're only available two days a week, Wednesdays and Thursdays. The position is a three to four days a week minimum of 20 hours a week position. Thank you so much, and it was great speaking to you. I know the schools, I know the students, I know the teachers, I know the staff, I know the area. I know everything, I know the systems, I could slide right in. I am thrilled that you hired, that someone is on the agenda for tonight. I am thrilled. However, why did we wait so long? And why didn't my replacement get fired last year? There was never going to be a decrease in services. You were always gonna have the same amount of services, your speech, OT and PT. Always, it wasn't going to change. So why, why do we now have to worry about compensatory? And now, this lovely person, whoever it might be, I am so thrilled. 18 hours per week when I was told it had to be 20. No training, who wouldn't have had to train me? I am, like I said, I am happy that you have someone. Why did it take so long? And on the agenda for board members, June 2022, did you know that you previously hired an FEDC who was previously hired who worked here? On the agenda, and an outside contractor for speech and OT, they were approved and they were never brought on. They were never, they were never brought here. Why? Why do you keep doing this to our special ed students? Why? Please stop rushing them under the carpet. Please stop pushing our parents and telling them live by sending them letters that they're gonna be getting all this compensatory. Please stop, please stop. There's a revolving door in the special ed supervisor director position. Why? Board members, please, 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 please.
Good evening, Kiera was here, 12th and Central Street, Asbury Park District. Two things. First thing, obviously, I was gonna speak on the uniforms. Then I came to remember asking about the color, do you have an example? They have hat in black, because from my understanding, kids come to school and says they don't have the colored uniforms, they have to go to the kitchen. But I think if you just allow them, for this year, people working out a mixture to wear black pants, as long as they come to school, they get the education. No, they want to go to the kitchen. And secondly, if you do, I guess, a lot easier, I want to play something for you.
May I tell you, sir?
Two walkers, two walkers juniors, and four Coca-Cola.
And what I had to wait long, if you ate one walker with no pickle and no lettuce, no syrup.
Hold the pickle, hold the net, special order is gonna set us all. We ask you, let you let us serve as your way. Oh, well, in that case, could I have the other walker with, and if you catch me, sure.
I'm sorry, ma'am, excuse me. She's still on the phone. I don't understand what's being said, that's why. Okay, I have a tenant name, ma'am. Oh, yeah. Okay, I play that for a reason, because people come in this district, they didn't have these there. And if you were to go on the application that this is not very keen, you cannot come here and you just wanna do a habit of your way. It's like, it's getting ridiculous now, this been going on, on and on and on. So come on, let's get real here, okay? So from my understanding, you got people coming in, don't expect that kids, the kid, it's already, some of them have home training, but some adults go to school, speaking to the kids, they're like, they don't have home training too. So as an adult, you should be teaching these kids not scooting to their level and saying in front of some faculty, but they said to you, this is not a typical type of situation. Don't do as I do, as I say, as they say, but you don't have to, you don't scoop to kids, they don't need to actually be educated. And as an adult, no matter if it's not your child, but send an example. Thank you, have a good night.
Hello, Asbury Park, Asbury Park. I just wanted to say, I have a problem with Aiden, I have a dad right here. How do they just come to our school? I basically had a problem with my friend, and we were having, like, the one in one festival, and then he starts, he basically speaks, speaks at the end, like, disrespect. He started, he started acting out a little bit of a part of it. And he starts to go back and forth with us, and I'm not, I'm not the first person to sabotage it. It's actually like I said, it's my first time speaking. It's the first time that I've been involved with a very, um... So I had a problem with that, I figured, so I think it's something that's not a part of it, so I think I'm supposed to become a kid, that's professional. And yes, I said something, but that's not, like, happened to me, it's happened to me, you know, saying something like that. And I tried to say I'm a fake athlete, you know, just saying I'm a fake athlete, I'm a player. But I mean, it's, it's, it's paid, yeah, I'm talking to me, you know, I'm seventy-five years old, I invest in it. It's just, he, I'm not the first person to have a problem, I'm just, I'm just here, standing up for myself. And I gave a problem, so my mom, I hear shit I've heard, I just wanted to speak out. It's not just happened to me, it's happened to a kid, that's what I did.
If I heard the meeting here with...
I forgot it to you.
Oh, okay, I thought I heard you. Dr. Adams, I consider you...
Ma'am, I'm sorry, can you name please?
My, oh, my name is Felia Kendall. I'm a resident of Asbury Park. I had come last week, last month, concerning my granddaughter and the dream program. I hear that there may be some sort of partial solution for my problem because last month she was, she was just unattended, in the classroom, unattended. Didn't like that at all. But I have, now I have an issue with, uh, excuse, uh, mister, with Greece. Where can I get a copy of the eleventh grade curriculum? I can get one from you? Or eleventh grade and twelfth grade? But my question to you, sir, is, there is something going on and maybe, uh, because I think I read this blog that you're talking about. So I spoke to another person who goes to Asbury Park High School. And his kid told me, he's in something, he's in a program, he's in the library, he's in the eleventh grade. He was going to school midway after the second marking period. His whole schedule got changed and he goes to the library. Okay, and I asked him, all right, so you go? And he told me, he's working on some subjects. And I said, okay, so how long do you work on it? He said, as soon as he finishes each one of the subjects that he has to do, he said he could leave. I said, leave what? He said, leave school. I said, that would be ridic, that's ridiculous. They wouldn't put you in something like that. They wouldn't let you leave school. Let's say you sat in it and you did, you had five classes, you finished it in ten days. What were you supposed to do? He told me he was supposed to come back in September. And I told him, no, you're a young black man. If you get out of this place and leave this school every day, the only thing you will probably do is be getting into trouble or do things. But he told me that when he's finished, when he's finished, that's what he's gonna do. And then he came back and told me that he can't go to the cafeteria without a guard, not guard, I'm sorry, not guard, uh... An escort, he has to have an escort, and that he doesn't keep him in the cafeteria with the regular population. But what I really wanna know is, after he does all this, and I asked about that curriculum, Mr. Adams, because while he's taking time to wait to do this, what he is doing, and he is doing it because they said he needed to do it to graduate, how is he going to finish what he needs for the eleventh grade? I don't understand. How can he finish what the eleventh grade courses that he's going to be, that he's missing now while he's in the library? That's my question.
Ma'am? Unfortunately, it's not a discussion we answer, session we have to have a meeting with you later.
You know what? I tried today, I called the principal, because that's what I wanted to do. Sit down with somebody, so they can say, talk to me, tell me about it, what I've been doing. So I decided to come here, because like I said, I consider Dr. Adams to have this whole ship, all that skin. So I, you know what? I'll make a point to see you live about that. So expecting and the eleventh grade and twelfth grade curriculum, I like that. And of course, this is just me. Where's the board attorney? Are you?
Sorry, just out of curiosity. As Mrs. Kendall, you have to get some of your, uh... Yeah, I'm sorry, three minutes is up.
Okay, and as the board attorney, just out of curiosity, how can we have that monitor, that physical monitor right there replaced?
This board has nothing to do with the selection of the state monitor? That's all done through the Department of Education?
Yeah, I know.
So you answer your own question?
Okay, no, 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 so you just mean, I need to email the department, which is basic. Got it, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ms. Ullman, I reside at 1101 Benning Avenue. And I have some questions in regards to, you guys do a journalism class at the high school, but online, there is no curriculum for that class. So I'd like to find out if there is a curriculum and how many parents need that information so they know that their kids are doing that class, and who's actually teaching that class. The other issue I have is that the board's mind mentioned that the high school principal has actually sent home a letter to parents asking parents to sign off to give permission for their children to leave early if they have all their credits at the Asbury Park High School. My understanding is, and I have new policies and procedures that are online, there is nothing stated in your policies and procedures in this school district that states it is okay for us to offer an opportunity for our children to leave school at a halfway. And gives reasons why you can leave, it does not say that because you have credit, you can leave at a halfway school. You are not in the job program. And if I'm not mistaken, there was an issue last year with another student that her parents signed her out for a halfway day of school and became an issue and they had to stop, somebody had to ask you to go to a school in order to start a young lady out. But now here we are this year, and we're allowing you to send home stuff to parents, asking them to release their information in regards to giving permission for kids to actually sign out at halfway. These kids are still liars. Parents are still responsible for their children. So first thing, you're gonna have a kid to come to school for halfway day, sign out when you're done with your classes because they have their credits. Who's gonna be responsible for that kid when he walks out that building? And the parent is a full counter? Are you guys gonna take this home until they get back and those kids are on the street for the wrong thing? I don't think so. Now, my statement, this is going to be addressed to Joe Grillo and this is also going to be addressed to Dr. Adams. You know, I understand a lot of people get frustrated because things are being said within our community in regards to what's going on and what's happening in this district. But like I said last year, and I said it again, depending on this school year, starting to hold town hall meetings to inform your community, and your parents and your residents and your teachers in regards to what's going on in this district, will save you a lot of this issue. So you won't have to worry about a lot of the quality thing. But until you actually start holding town meetings to keep everybody... But until you actually start holding town meetings to keep everybody informed of what's going on, there aren't going to have any changes. You're going to still be dealing with this dang thing all the way through. So I say, we can keep our town hall meetings to inform our parents of what's going on. And we're living in a lot of the issues that you're dealing with in regards to people saying one thing and you're saying something else. Everybody in a one meeting, you can discuss everything, put it on the table, and keep it moving. This way, we won't have to have a town hall meeting, and it's never saying, well, that's not what he said at that meeting. But until we start learning, we don't know how to work together to make decisions that we have our children, the one thing you all have to remember, without these kids in this district, you will be here, not wondering. Thank you.
I'm sorry, really, really quick point for us, I know it's public comment, but I forgot. I repeated before, uh, March fourth at Macro Bites, two P M. Have some coffee, have some donuts, if you want to come by, ask me any questions you want. I'll listen to whatever you want, you, you have to say. And I invite any of my board members to come with me. There are certain things that we can't speak about as board members, especially like most things, like personnel. But I'll be more than happy to sit and listen. I see there's five people also online that are listening to us, to come to Macro Bites on March fourth and have a cup of coffee with me. And whatever I can forward back to the superintendent and the board president, I will. So just wanted to put it out there, sorry, I forgot to mention.
Uh, my name is Washington Avenue, I'm a former resident of Landmark Park, uh, Landmark, Landmark Park High School. Um, my question is this, I got six kids in love with the curriculum, six, right? Uh, they're in all walks of the school. I got one in high school, then four in middle school, because it's not middle school. I got one that goes to this school, and I got one that goes to, okay. Uh, the first thing I had is uniforms, which I'm sure you all have dressed in. But my thing is, I'm a single father, right? I work for folks, like forty-five to fifty hours a week. Uh, my daughter comes to me because she ain't got a school uniform, a school uniform, during she's in wear, she's got attention. That's not cool, that's not cool to the point where she's like, well, I'm not going to school because I need my uniform. My thing is, it's not about the uniform, it's about education, it's about learning. So I was on board to get attention because she didn't have a school uniform. Makes no sense to me. Now, and this is her name is. So another thing is, uh, middle schoolers, right? What more is there for you to do, right? Uh, middle school kids, they're like, oh, bro, the only thing they got is wrestling, basketball, you know, what, baseball? And, but there's really not much more for them to do, you know? Like sports wise, or even like active club wise, like being off the ground, something to do like. My daughter wanted to be in some type of activity club, some type of art club, create something, anything, right? Some of the middle schools have something to do. I already got over there with high school kids, my other high school kids, high school kids, a lot of them, uh, my other kids go home, so I, so, I mean, just, that's, that's my concern. Just figure out something, something for them to do, so that they're not out running the streets and doing other stuff. That's it, that's all I got.
Hey, I guess. Hello, uh, my name is Randy Vasquez, and I am a junior at Asbury Park High School. And I have a question about a class that I used to have, and it was called credit recovery. I want to know what that class was meant for, or what was the reason I had it? And it was removed on Genesis, and I have no clue what I earned from that class. All I did was just sit in that class, and I want to know what happened to those hours that I had to do while sitting down? Do I get those hours towards my buyback hours that I need to complete? Or why was credit recovery removed? That is my only question. Thank you.
Hi, guys, you know, our Matthews High School. I have just three things right there, because I do see council, a lot of students come to me with concerns. And so my first one is actually the SAT prep, which is for the three kids. I'm going to read to you, only four percent of colleges now require test scores, four percent. I know because my daughter's in college now, she was part of the, like, here. They want something else, can we do, can we do something with the usual programming class? We have so many things online. The SAT is not what they ask for. It's just, if you just consider it, they're concerned because it's, it's really not valid right now for colleges or SAT scores. Um, second of all, my daughter wasn't really having a lot of shares, she was a volunteer, she now pays university, she has two semesters to go, thank you very much. We're on the Jesus. And when you, can I help in any way? Please don't give these kids thirty credits, there has to be option B. Georgia Court, Rutgers, our kids are used to virtual anyways, or anything, I understand that. I, I bet on your side, the kids are like, I, I understand thirty credits, but that's half of what they have. All I'm saying is, can you step out of the box and ask the questions of maybe keep a program with a grant if it's a funding issue? That's all, I'm willing to help, you know, the back. And then the third final thing is also the CTE program. I want to cry, because I was part of the CTE program from the get-go, I was a math consultant. I still want to cry. We lost some of the COVID, I'm glad we're keeping Allied Health. We still have the engineering, we lost a lot of public safety. The kids are begging me for it, they're begging, it's not one, it's not two. You heard from the seven elders, I have seen her who's in tears because she couldn't finish that program. All I'm saying is, uh, going to the cosmetology will go the same line as the CTE woman. Every twenty-four year old son who makes a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year as a cybersecurity person. We have zero, zero, zero computer, zero. I teach them, I haven't done it in a while, but if you need to go back, I will. They need some program, maybe if you start with money. That's where these kids are going to make the money, they're not going to make the money just out of here. It's just, I don't even know where that came from, the CTE program was to keep our students, was it not? It was to increase our enrollment. What parent or charter school students will say, oh, let me send her Asbury Park to this out here? If you say, we have engineering, we have computer classes, we have Allied Health, we have these things that are marketable skills. My other daughter just got double for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, she's twenty-seven years old. She does marketing, she does websites. Ava, my nineteen-year-old, is in a website design course right now at Pigs, and she loves, she loves. Please, please, I want it. But I'm, my heart is breaking for these kids, because they want to learn, and they want to do things that are marketable. That's it, that's all.
A few responses, Madam President, to the board, um, to Mr. Davis, um, I'm sure of the high school principal, as well as Mr. Robins. We have our after-school program for higher middle school students. They just need to see their building, um, principal about signing up, uh, for the after-school program, uh, for seventh and eighth grade. That's been something that we've had, um, since our after-school programs have started. Um, and so we have, definitely struggled with attracting the seventh and eighth grade students into the after-school program, because they are a little bit different, um, than the elementary program that we presently have until five, six o'clock, which you will find in other places where we do provide meals as well. Um, so just have your students that are interested, see the principal to sign, okay? As far as the uniforms are concerned, your son, he is on, he stood nearby to be admitted. Um, he know that I answered some of those questions, and we're going to continue to work on the uniform. But we, I would consider a dress code, um, because with the uniform, students either have to have a certain top or certain bob. Here's they are in dress code, um, that is, um, more than acceptable for a father like yourself, having multiple children. Um, one of the things that we have also offered to many families is to fill out the waiver, um, during the early part of the school year, for the uniforms to be one uniform per child, per family. Um, so next year, I would employ you, if that situation applies to you, I'm not saying that it does, but if it does, please, you know, make sure that if it do apply, look at that, and we will be able to, uh, because it's on a first, on a first serve basis next year. Um, but as far as the cleanliness of the uniform, also have to wash it and dry it at the high school, which students can use at any time, um, it's in the library. Um, so we, that's part of our, uh, social conscious project. So we do have, um, detergent and machines in here for students to wash their clothes, okay? Wash their uniforms. So, um, which all the older students, of course, we all know about washing their own clothes, you know, separator, you know, do what you need to do. But we do have the machines and detergents to facilitate that, okay? Um, so wanted to make sure I addressed that. Uh, as far as the CTE programs, um, there are varying views and opinions about that. I know two beauticians that own three salons. I know two barbers that own two barber shops each. I know the countless number of, within serving communities, whether you're going to get a doobie, that place is packed on a Saturday in the serving communities. So we need to be closely aware of who we're working with and who we're working for, and the entrepreneurial opportunities that cosmetology, they're not just doing here, they're not playing with darkness. So we need to be a little more mindful of what that means within the context of the communities that utilize those services. For a serving number of people coming out, it is the only opportunity to have a gainful entrepreneurial opportunity after some of them have been incarcerated. So to minimize the opportunity of a cosmetology opportunity, where they can take those skills and transfer them to wherever they want to go. The world is a lot bigger than just mom, cabinet, New Jersey. So those skills and those licenses are transferred. So I want to be mindful that we have taken into serious consideration after losing, uh, excuse me, after the lawn public safety staff member resigned and relocated to Florida. We are not in the position of going into any professional's room and indicating that they have to go, they have seen employment elsewhere. I'm sure all of us at one point or another have sought employment in different locations for various reasons. That is what some of the other professionals have done. We are not in the business beside asking for executive duty as to the reasonable rationale why staff members have left. For example, Ms. McMillan, paid out on maternity leave, God bless her, everything, thinking about what's best for her and her family. One of our teachers of the month, who was here, had a baby, and she was my, um, my special ed teacher, decided to come back. But had she decided to make other options for her and her family, that would have been up to her and her family. So to make that connection and that grand canyon beat, that people are leaving here because somehow just things aren't that good, well, let's just say, there are business reports out there that finding employees in the nation right now is hard to find. So we are looking to fill our science positions, we're lucky that we were able to find physician to fill the CTE Allied Health position. We've been looking for hard to fill positions such as chemistry, body, those are very hard positions to fill, not just at Asbury Park, but within state of New Jersey and national. So it's very good, um, and easy to have a myopic approach when you're looking at things from a small lens. But we need to think macro on how, what we're doing and what we're offering our students is, in a lot of ways, offering them the opportunity that they will have, that they'll never have to worry about getting fired from a job. If you employ yourself, you'll never have to worry about being unemployed. So I think we need to be a little more cognizant of some of the conversations about what that means. I don't know one barber shop that's not packed on a Saturday morning. Excuse me, excuse me, ma'am, excuse me, ma'am, excuse me, ma'am, excuse me, ma'am, excuse me, ma'am. The reality is, the CTE program that we have looked at and looked at, because of the enrollment of our students in those programs, have forced us to look at other options. This was not overnight, I just had a cup of coffee, and now I have an espresso, um, brush, that I need to come up with a new fantastic idea. There have been countless meetings, visits, um, as well, to address some of these programs that we are offering to our students. If, if cosmetology was not, um, a major thing, then that would not be one of the offerings at the accountable techs with them. Now, you don't have to necessarily like those facts, but the facts are the facts. The, um, man that was, that said she was going to meet with me, I'm glad we meet with you, um, we made an appointment, um, we'll, we'll...
Yeah, no.
Well, I got you, okay? I told you before, most of the issues that you brought up before, we've kind of addressed them, right? Um, so the New Jersey Virtual School is one of the programs that we are using, utilizing in the high school to help our students who are extremely credit deficient. The board, I think, two months ago, three months ago, approved a very hefty, um, sum to provide all of our students who are credit deficient with New Jersey Virtual School in partnership with Moex. One of the things that have been discussed about the validity of some of the buyback hours and the activities that students have been doing to buy back hours, and I would be the first to say, did not meet the smell test. Therefore, we need to address it and address it properly and to do it coherently with which was best with other districts we're using, as well as doing, utilizing New Jersey Virtual School. So those students who are in the media center at the high school most of the day are utilizing New Jersey Virtual School for credit recovery. As far as the journalism class, um, I have received an email communication from our teacher. I have met with the director of curriculum instruction, as well as the high school principal, to address the curriculum needs of that, and they did have a meeting with that teacher today. After they release, I will be looking into that, because again, I may know a lot, but I don't know everything. And I would be the first to say that when I don't know, give me some time to look into it, and I'll give you feedback on that at next month's, uh, board meeting. Town hall meeting, we are looking to do one, but the board is looking to do. With Madam President, Madam Vice President. I will attend, but that is not my meeting, that is the Board of Education's meeting. If ninety percent of your questions revolve around curriculum and instruction, then please send me an email, make a phone call, set up an appointment, because I oversee the operations. As far as policy and governance, that's on the board. So, Mr. Vasquez, student, I hope I, um, any of your questions regarding, um, your credit recovery, please make sure you see the principal, who will make sure that she addresses your needs. And again, if there are specific questions related to, um, in-building issues, please, if you have not first met with the building principal, which they are always accessible, to resolve any of your concerns, then the next phase is I get phone calls, I have a... I have a twenty-four-hour turnaround on responding to phone calls and emails. Any phone calls that I receive, they do receive a phone call directly from me and or directly. Um, as far as, um, our special ed services, um, this has been an ongoing concern and I would say this again. We lost eight point six million dollars last year. We are slated to lose another eight million dollars again this year, possibly. I hope the same energy is at the city council meeting when we put forward to get our numbers from the state. Deputy May is here. She's been an awesome partner. Um, and she has her job in the district. So she understands personally the firsthand impact of those cuts. But she is one person on the city council. So if you look at historically, the funding of the district in order for some of those physicians to provide services, whether it's OT, PT, or related services, those services are not being offered at charter schools. We've already been dealing with our early intervention students being told that they're being provided at charter schools. So we're doing our best to make sure in all of the schedules, because we've been dealing with this behind the scenes with the staff, with the department. And the changeover on staff, again, we can agree to disagree on a lot of different things, but we can disagree on the amount of work that both is being done by the staff to provide for the students and the administration to support that. It is just a difference on how those services are being done. Thank you, Madam President.
Good evening, everyone. This is PHR report from January. We had three, um, PHR complaints on three word, um, found it. There was scripture reference, verbal nay calling, um, meaning nay calling, not in the sense of comments. And the principal is going to just, just hear those now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion for the seconds of minutes?
Uh, I'd like to change my vote on, uh, previous, uh, board member, items six, ma'am, sorry, seven.
Okay, um, for the members who are here, Mr. Rogers, um, is making a motion to allow himself to, uh, change his votes from the prior board meeting, specifically items seven and eight. You recall that we previously, uh, did this for another board member. We take the same, um, approach to doing it for Mr. Rogers. So we need a motion and a second and, um, from there, we'll do a roll call vote.
Second. This is allowed, Mr. Rogers? Change his vote from the one twenty-six, twenty-three meeting to seven, eight, to abstain. Mr. Zinski? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
It's all good?
Yes.
Let's go.
So, Mr. Hastings, then, for the next motion, which would be to approve those minutes, um, I would just, uh, suggest that when the motion went made, uh, it would be to approve the minutes with the amendment, uh, that was just put forward by Mr. Rogers.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for A one twelve B through C? Requesting change of it.
A moment.
Mrs. Zinski?
Yes.
Let's go. Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
It's all good.
Um, one question. Uh, Mr. Hastings, I just want to make sure I have my numbers. How much did we give to the charter schools, uh, last budget?
Probably twelve million dollars. So what it looks like a year and a...
Oh, I'd say to you, we're giving it. Twelve million taxpayer dollars.
Could I have a motion for all of A to C one to C four, number fourteen?
I'll leave. Motion.
Wait a second, please. Second.
Questions, Thomas?
If this is for, or we should just for C?
Yes, right now we're going to the C agenda. So it's all A to C one, number one to C four, number fourteen.
Sorry, I'm delayed. I'm outside here.
A long wait, uh, Mr. Hastings. I saw it before now, of course I can't find, um, the Axelrod, um, trip. Where is that? Uh, that's on the bean. Okay. I just want to make sure.
Hey, some students, that's all. Yeah. Sorry. Um, the students will be, uh, once again, they're forty left. Um... No, I haven't changed the clue yet.
Okay, so right now we have a motion for the C section, C one, number one to C four, number fourteen. Move. Second. Any questions or comments? May I give Mrs. Zinski?
Yes.
Let's go. Mr. Rogers?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
It's all good.
Uh, I asked for a signature for either B one through B six, number one, B one, through B six, number two.
One quick comment on, uh, this is B one to B five. Right? Um...
B six.
B six. B six, sorry. Um, with the item twenty-three, uh, so the board's gonna approve up to a hundred honorable students including staff to attend the Axelrod for its performing arts center, vocal auditorium to watch the play Raisin, which is a reimagining of a raisin and sun. Um... I'm not that same from that one, but just really quick. Anyone who, uh, who has ever read the book, definitely go out and see the play. Um, it's fantastic, so, um, I just wanted to put that out there.
It's not personal.
So, I'm saying, all right, I don't get any game from it, so... I don't get any games.
All right, so we have Mr. Motion on the table. B one, number one, through B six, number two. Would move. In fact, did any of them have questions?
No worries.
Seeing on Mrs. Zinski?
Yes.
Let's go. Mr. Rogers?
Yes. Fair.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Make the motion, parents.
Okay, we're gonna make a motion to go in a second. So whereas the open club meeting act allows exclusion from discussion at the public portion of the meeting of certain matters as outlined below and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education was to discuss such matters, we need and will make such decisions public and proper conclusion has been reached. Now they are fortified, be that it be solved. At the Asbury Park Board of Education, we will be closing session on this date, February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two at the Asbury Park, New Jersey for purposes of outline below, um, for litigation, contract matters, um, economy purchase. Motion, please.
A moment. Fair.
Call it later.
Aye. Mr. Rogers? Eric? Mrs. Zinski?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And let's go.
Here.
You wish your turn is finished?
Second.
Call it later.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.